Thank you. So, we're recording and everything likes to live, obviously. Okay. So, we're coming back from executive session. We're going to, we have a budget work session. We're gonna start by talking about, you know, while we're in executive, obviously, we received some headline updates to new modifications to HHS staffing in particular. Do you wanna go through them?
Sure. We, and just to clarify within, there were some particular personnel matters, which allows the board to go into executive session, those we won't discuss in public. The broader outline is to update you as a board in public and about where we are with the budget.
Sorry.
For the recommended, that's a good exclamation, recommended budget for the coming year. And to work the budget as you, as recommended is, as is for Hillside. The recommended budget is as is for FMS. We can talk some more about that, 'cause in the last meeting you had some, some very good questions about aspects of the FMS budget. Quite importantly, the high school is now whole. Thanks to some great work by Andy Kleiman, Tara Ware, working with Maureen Carbello, very much working with department chairs and others at the high school. We can report to you that social studies will be a 1.0 higher to replace the 1.0 retiring individual. Math will be a combined .5, .5, so a 1.0 higher, be a combined certification within special ed and math, which is increasingly a very important combination of certification and skill talent set. That will have the math department, that they are whole. And then in the English department, while it's listed in the docs now, I think in the public record, Melissa, if it's there, you'll see a .6 with an asterix. That is what can often happen in a, especially here in Hastings where you have strong internal individuals, there's an internal candidate, teacher of very strong, who is shifting into that role. So, as the English department sees it, for them, this is, they are now whole. So, we are pleased that we've been able to work this out. One thing on this sheet that we, I wanna make sure you're clear about, and Andy Kleiman and Tara joining Andy, and actually Melissa Samansky was part of this too, is this clarification on AIS. Going forward, both Andy and Tara come to us from schools and a location where this type of interventions are, is essential, and you really wanna be surgical. You wanna work on those students who really need that intensive help. It's not a place for tutoring help. It's not a place for little bits of help, as opposed to where do you need some significant support and help? And so, laid out here in Andy's and Tara's writing, and I think Melissa helped with this, is that we just want the expectations to be clear. That, that allows us to get to, again, I think the word optimal matters here, both efficient and effective. So, we wanna be more narrow and focused with the students who really do need this type of intervention help. It's not a place to go to get that extra help that you missed after school. This is a very different type of arrangement. I don't know, Melissa, if you wanna add to this, 'cause that's a key update as to where the high school is. And a final comment, I'll let Melissa speak, is we heard lots of concern, but oh, you're going to make us whole by going to AIS, but doesn't that undermine AIS? And we wanna be clear that no, we're actually working to strengthen AIS and make it that much more of a productive place and opportunity for students.
Yeah. So, I won't be redundant, but just to punctuate, the idea is to get students in, give them really targeted interventions, and then get students out. Get them in, get them what they need, and then have them out, so that they can continue to grow. And for students who need additional support, we still have the academic coaching period at the end of the day, the 2:45 to 3:15 time. That is a key area of the day where students pop in to get extra support. So, that will continue to function.
Thank you. Any board comments, questions about, you know, a lot of good changes, substantive changes, you know? Any discussion?
I just had one question about the AIS. In lieu of a study hall, could, could a parent or a child request it in their schedule? Or is it not intended to be kind of in advance? It's in the, it's in the course of, in reaction to?
Yes. So, it is specifically designed for students who need remediation support. And so, the idea is that we are internally monitoring data to scoop students up, and they are referred to the MTSS committee, where people look at their data, they talk about interventions. If it needs to be a tier-two intervention, where students are referred outside of the classroom for additional support, that's when they would be eligible in their schedule. Now, that said, we believe in dialogue between families and the school, and, you know, the counselors as well. So, we wanna make sure that we're all working together to flag certain things, if they need to be on the radar. But the idea is that any member of the faculty that sees a student with need would then refer that student not to AIS, but to the MTSS table, to put really specific targeted interventions into play, one of which may be an AIS in the schedule.
Got you. Thank you. And I just wanted to compliment the team for a lot of extra work that went into this, to really make everything whole. Thank you.
Didum. Thank you.
Yeah. Tredow.
Well said, Alex. No, but it's true, our administrators really went back to look at it and listen to the families and listen to teachers, and I think it's in a much better place.
I might, a work session is a chance for you to work on certain topics, and I think it would be appropriate for me as, to sort of, on behalf of the administrative team, where we are on this budget is this, the next three weeks with you voting on the 22nd. But I was quite serious in the last meeting, when good questions were being raised by members of the board, to say, you know, there's a phase now, and there's a future phase. So, it might be worth a little bit of discussion.
At FMS, you mean?
Anywhere, as you think about, particularly FMS, but also the high school, if there's anything where you say, here are a few things that as you think about next year, and we will definitely be talking to you, but what often happens is, in the heat of the budget discussion, up comes stuff that, that should've come up earlier, and then it's so easy that it came up, and we'll say, we'll get to it, and then a year from now, we're in the exact same spot. So, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna exhaust you all, but it might be a great chance literally to list out, to say, here's some headlines on what you, we really want you to be thinking about. We had talked about some summer retreat work opportunity, we could come back to it then. I just don't wanna lose this moment of energy, if I'm being clear. So, now I'll be quiet and listen.
I, I wanna kind of second what everybody said of thanking people. I feel like a lot of work has gone on and a lot of listening, and I think we often get, I don't wanna say accused, but we often are told that we're not listening, and I think people have tried to listen here. And we also got a lot of letters regarding particularly the high school changes from parents and people in the community, that I thought were really excellent letters, that were really thoughtful, respectful, and I think I said that last time, but, but one of the things that came up, that a number of people, I don't know how prevalent this is, and I appreciate that it's perhaps a scheduling issue, but just wondered about thoughts about when parents write that their kids have two or three study halls. I don't know if that's a day or a week, I mean, two or three study halls a week.
In their schedule, I think.
Yeah. But people being upset about the number of study halls, and I don't know if that's something that we can, can or should be thought about.
Can I add some perspective, too, on top of that? Not to answer it, but just, you know, it is kinda interesting, like, the students have eight periods across their two days, right? There aren't eight core subjects. So, what do you do with the other periods, right? And I think one of this, the key, like, we look at it, like, the push and pull balance in our district, in our schedule, is, you know, we could have more sections of core subjects, but then we would have fewer sections of electives. Is that something, as a small district, is that sort of our brand? We are a kinda small district. Could we, as our brand, you know, core rigor with smaller class sizes? Maybe that, maybe it is, you know, and we pull back on the electives. Could, we talked a lot about the work that's trying to be done on the master schedule. Could the master schedule be done to better accommodate those things, you know? Side, like, you know, Melissa has raised the idea of the win period, for what you need put in a specific block. So, I, I don't see all the pieces, but I do wonder if we can get to a point where, by working on the master schedule, we can have more sections of core subjects, perhaps fewer sections of electives, but with a, with better flexibility planned on where they happen or where they go. So, same question as you're asking, just with some-
Right. I mean, I don't wanna throw a wrench into what we're trying to do this year right now.
Yeah.
But I think part of what's also difficult, I think, like, for a ninth grader especially, but really for, probably anybody, the fact that the periods are 80 minutes, that's a long time for a study hall. That's a long time.
Yeah, that's true.
I'd find that hard. And so, I just think it's, I don't know, it's just something to throw into the mix of the 80 million things we have to be trying to think about and juggle.
I was gonna say, I, yeah, I feel what you're saying is funny, 'cause I was asking parents about this, and it seemed also like a lot of students who took French or Latin had more challenges than those who took Spanish, 'cause there are more sections of it. So, I also think it's like a master scheduling issue, and as we have new people involved, they might be able to take a fresh look at how we manage it, and like, what electives are available when.
Yeah. Just one more thing to think about.
I mean, I know it's like, maybe totally pie in the sky, but I often have this thought, I mentioned in one of the meetings, is there any, do we foresee any opportunities, credited opportunities, where a student could take asynchronous courses, maybe in their study hall, whether it was an AP online or something like that? Is there any, like, is there anything on the horizon that looks like that?
Yeah. So, typically, it's a little intricate, but typically what happens, and we, we had to do this at one point, coming back from the pandemic too, to make sure that we were helping students in the high school get course credit in some unique circumstances. But typically, you still have to staff that with an internal person, unless it's an offering that we really don't offer, have the expertise to offer. So, we would have to have a Hastings person and the online component, in most cases, not in all cases.
Do you mean to teach it or to supervise it?
To, to be there as a member of the faculty, because it would be a position that may sit in their realm of being able to teach a content area. So, it just would depend what it is.
Right. It doesn't change, doesn't change the FT model.
Right, exactly.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah. But for the most part, it would be, it would have to be, for the most part, it would have to be both. There would be an internal person plus the digital component.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I would just wanna go back to, I think, kinda where Bill started, with anything else we wanna add, and, you know, kinda discussion around if we could have kind of a regular check-in on some of these new hires in particular, new positions, new, like, are they meeting the intent? How are we measuring success? I know it's part of the larger action plan, there's a lot of different moving parts, but we were just kinda talking about the governance of that, given that, you know, there's a lot of focus now on new people coming to FMS. We'd like to kinda make sure that that gets the support it needs from us as well.
Yeah. I think, especially FMS, there's a lot of moving parts, right? We have an FMS action plan, we have a significant budget component, which is novel this year, obviously with the bond component. There's a lot of moving parts, so, yeah, definitely a substantive update would be great for, for the board, I think.
And it'd be really cool to track back data over time, especially since they're bringing so much really important resources around MTS and ELA and math, organizational skills.
Let's capture where we are.
Like, let's see where we are now, and let's see where we are in five years. And like, if we see market change, that will be super exciting. And if we don't, then, you know, you reflect and change. But that's, there's real potential to measure it now, I think, in a really thoughtful way.
Good point.
Yeah. I agree.
On sort of a similar note, it's, I think it's so important that our middle school and high school, our whole and our leaders have clear visions. In visiting some schools recently, I've been really impressed with their engineering programs, that are usually six through 12. So, if we're talking about, like, hopes and dreams for the future, it'd be fun to see that, 'cause some of it was very also like hands-on and lab worky, but that's not really a word. But, um, it was neat, 'cause it really engaged multiple intelligences in different ways, and I also think it speaks to this push towards 21st century skills and new, the blue ribbon graduation measures offered by the state. So, just also like thinking about different strands to add in the future, and hearing what our students, our leaders and faculty are curious about.
Actually, I didn't make it that trip with you, but when I looked at the photos and stuff, you know, I had mentioned it in the meeting, but, you know, if we're just putting, if we're just spitballing, putting it out there, I am definitely, I think, I would be interested in seeing that the biomedical arm of the project lead the way.
That was cool.
Yeah. Because I think, it's, it's a great thing. I also think just from a, from an equity standpoint, you know, it attracts a broader section, you know, so, you know, that would be something I think a lot of parents would be excited by.
I'm only chuckling, Catherine, 'cause I'm thinking, well, I think we should go back to the 19th century. I think we should be doing like sewing, drafting, and woodshop.
That's what they do in the engineering class. It's all drafting and workshop, 'cause they're building models.
I think it's great.
It was so cool.
Sewing and fine, yeah.
There's a photo somewhere, I don't remember where I saw it.
What?
It's Hastings, I think Hastings High School from the 1930s, and their kids working on diesel marine engines, you know, like.
I mean, honestly, I think I would take the automotive class.
I would take the automotive class in a minute.
But the engineer was all that. It was very hands-on.
Yeah.
A little bit of architecture, a little bit of woodworking, you're building models. It just seemed like an exciting, and the teacher was so excited.
Yeah, that'd be exciting.
And I could see a lot of our teachers being excited about that.
Any other things to throw in the ring here? Are there any questions that you guys, the admins would like to ask, or from us, anything?
Yeah. Do you have any questions?
From our perspective? Okay.
One last thing. I'm really excited about the visioning conversation that we're gonna have this summer, 'cause I do think, like, I think you, Maureen and Bill and you, Alex, did a really great job of showing our, our future outlook, and it's tough financially. And I think that's when, like, having a really clear vision, and then budgeting to the vision, hiring to the vision, like, all these things, the vision becomes so important.
Absolutely.
So, I'm glad that we'll spend some time, us, but then maybe the whole district thinking about this.
Yeah. No, absolutely.
It's true work session moment. Let me just, if the board could think about, you obviously have your officers, but if, Alex, you wanna think about a point to be working with us on that, 'cause it's already April, and the summer will be on as fast. And then in terms of who would be involved from our end, we just wanna be mapping out summer schedules, so we actually get it to happen. So, I, I think it really will matter to, I mean, some thought was, because of schedules and all the rest, this may be more of an August-type thing, but we just wanna think on that and be planning for it.
Okay. I mean, we did, no, you know, we had a lot of meetings this past August for the bond, so things can definitely work. Yeah. We'll, we'll put it together.
All right.
Sure. All right. So, we can always come back, 'cause we're just kinda flowing here, but we should move on to agenda item number two.
And just to remind you, your next steps on the budget will be, you have a public meeting on the eighth. There'll be, I think, some bond updates there, potentially Maureen will speak to that shortly. You vote on 22nd, so, if, but just let us know if there are other things you want us to circle back to. My sense right now is we're in a pretty good place. I'm not planning an update on the budget at the eighth, I think we have some other big fish, that's the advantage of this work session. But let us know if there's some things that you want, you want us to update you on on the eighth, or in the budget, otherwise, we'll aim for the 22nd, that, your vote.
Okay. Okay. So, again, we can pop back if anybody wants to, but moving on to the bond.
We're just updating the attachment, because we're really working off of the February 11th attachment.
Okay. So, that first one here, that's good.
Not, not the first one. She's gonna switch it out right now.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Because the, the February 11th has the revised budget of, of, you know.
So, we're looking, we're looking at the timing thing mostly at the moment.
Yes. So, so as Bill said, on your, on your next, at the next meeting, April 8th, the architects will be in to walk you through the documentation in regards to the SECRE, to allow you to ask questions, so that you're prepared to just then adopt it on April 22nd. So, in advance of that, we've sent it to you, the documentation, the, the worksheets and documentation required of them, the questions they have to ask to be able to make a determination one way or the other. And the idea is that you'll review those documents in advance of the meeting. And then the meeting, at the meeting itself, the board will walk through the questions, mostly, and Alex, there's a, not every question in there, but there's about 15 questions that, some of them are just very, like, standard kinda yes and no answers, but the ones that really relate to the field disturbance, because in terms of, most of the project did not fall into a required review of the SECRE. And then we'll go over the SHPO review of the front entrance, and they also, we also submitted the addition project to them, although they had no comments, so, meaning they didn't ask us to change any aspect of the design. But we can, we can, not we, the architects will then share with you the updated version of the front entranceway, and kind of go through the process, you know, pretty quickly. They'll explain to you what they submitted, and then the revisions that they made based upon feedback. But that is connected to that SECRE process, right? SHPO and SECRE, you can't adopt the SECRE resolution until the both were completed. So, the eighth is your opportunity to really go through it, so that when you, on the 22nd, when you actually just adopting the resolution, and then, of course, the, the items that will then appear on the ballot for the vote. So, we anticipate, right, at the next meeting, you'll go through the SECRE, and then any, decide as a board how you want the resolutions for the bond vote to appear on the April 22nd board agenda, 'cause at that point, that's locked in, right?
That's its clock, yeah.
I mean, of course, I guess on the fly, you can move it, but I think it would be better to have that conversation on the eighth, so that when we prepare the legal resolutions, and ensure that all the language meets the muster of our attorneys, to make sure just the way, you know, it's going to appear, because if you're gonna split the questions or have them, sometimes people split them in multiple ways or different ways of how they want them to be presented to the community, that language has to be the way it's going to appear on the ballot on the 22nd. So, we need to know. So, as an example, if you wanted it to be a split vote, and I'm just making, throwing this, an example out there, if you were to say the fields would be a separate question on the, on the ballot for the bond vote, you may also say, well, and say that's item B. Arguably, you know, you would maybe say in the first, the, the question one, in order to have B, you have to say yes to one, right? So, there's some that each of them stand on their own merit. Some of them, like, in order to get B, you have to, A has to pass. So, that's, we've done things like that before, because then you could just have somebody that just want the field, so I'm not gonna vote for A. And I say that just, you know, boards can structure them however they choose to do so, but there, we've had bond votes when we had multiple questions. In order to have C, you needed to vote affirmatively to A and B.
All right. So, would it make sense, so, let's say, on April 8th, we're getting all the new information.
Well, it's just the review of the information.
Well, we're not new, but like, from, from, well, we'll hear it from the architects and engineers again.
And read everything in advance of that, 'cause we have.
And so, if we needed to, before the 22nd, we could do a work session to hash out some of these details freely.
Well, we have spring break.
Well, we have spring break, yeah. So, you would, you would have by April 8th. April 8th, that's why I think you have, well, there's two things. We have the work session tonight for you to talk about the bond, right?
Okay.
And then at the eighth.
I'm not even here. I forgot about that.
Yeah. On the eighth, you need to then go through the questions you may have on the SECRE and, and decide.
Okay. So, the eighth is a-
On the eighth, what exactly is on the ballot and how it's gonna be presented, because we then have to get the language approved by the attorney to put on the April 22nd board meeting, and somebody said we do have that week off in between.
Can I ask a question? I know we're gonna get a new rendering of the SHPO-approved entryway. We've talked about it verbally, like, the value engineering of the cafeteria. Do we have any idea what that actually looks like, or how it looks different from the-
Well, I think we talked about it today. I mean, they would likely probably modify somewhat in the design, and I think also just, again, April 8th, like, I, in my discussion with them today, you know, I said the board may revisit some questions around the cafeteria as an example. So, we, in order to get down to the current $38 million budget, we did go in and reduce some square footages, in particular on the cafeteria addition, in which we said, well, we would reduce either the scope of the board, not the boardroom, excuse me, the community room, or we would reduce the overall cost of the, of the cafeteria itself, right? So, there's two ways to get to it. You know, we did kind of the easy way to say, okay, if we reduce the floor plan, you know, by 900 square feet.
Internally, right.
But there are some ideas that, you know, keeping the budget for that whole, and then saying, you know, we'll, we'll be committed to seeing like how that would be accomplished with that dollar amount. So, whether you keep the community room in there, and then make other decisions in terms of the cost, there's, the budget will be adhered to, in other words, so that there's a commitment there. And then there are still things that are currently in our bond proposal, that may be then picked up within the insurance. But when it's speaking to the architects in regards to that, I mean, there's two things. We, being they're too close to each other, we may need to, for the time being, and, and they did remind me that there is the work within the Farragut wing, but there is also ventilation work throughout the whole Farragut complex. So, it wouldn't be the, you would still need some money for that work. And then if you were to not have to expend that money, you would either just not spend it, and then, you know, at the end, you would use it to pay down debt. So, if you borrowed it and then didn't need it, and really by the time we borrow the bond, if we determined we didn't need to borrow for that, we just wouldn't borrow that, like 1.5 million, $2 million.
Right. So, what you're saying is, it's 38, it's kinda like softly locked in.
Yeah. That's locked in, yeah.
Are there any trustee, for, for the April 8th meeting, are there any questions, things that trustees want clarified, wanna see from, you know?
So, this just, I was just reminded of this as you were speaking, Maureen, that I attended a community meeting last week, and someone brought up the idea of New York State introducing legislation that bans turf, which I know this is like a real game changer. So, hypothetically, if all of that kinda comes to fruition, and our vote is for turf, right, however we word it.
Yes.
Then that would just be like the example you just said, like, we just wouldn't spend it, or like, how would that work?
Yeah. So, the, the thing is, yeah, so if, let's just talk from a timing perspective. If we had the vote and it included currently a turf option, and if that were to be voted, there was an approval on that, on that project, by the time we would, you know, if that is already a proposal in the state, by the time we would even have to borrow the money to fund it, the project, we would know whether this banned, right? 'Cause you figured they'll design it, it then has to go to the state for approval. From, from that June 17th vote, there's a good 12 to 15 months of time that'll lapse before we'll even have like an approval to do the work. So, within that timeframe, I think, and like, as an example, say, even at that point in time, it wasn't banned, you know, the state, say, if, if it was somewhere in that, that timeframe, I think the board could say, okay, well, we know it's gonna be banned, or now we're concerned that we put it in, and then what happens when we need to replace it, we won't be able to. We could then say, okay, we're not gonna do it, and then just not borrow that money. Because at that point, we wouldn't even have, we would not have even issued a bond at that point in time. So, it's not as though we borrowing, like, oh, we have this extra money, arguably, we wouldn't even have borrowed it at that point. 'Cause we're not borrowing probably for like a good two to three years. We would borrow banned, but that's only part of the funding, and we, if it was 38 million, we probably would borrow like a 20, we wouldn't borrow the whole, we wouldn't need it all, 'cause it'll take multiple years.
The, the bond is an authorization to borrow, it's not the money itself.
Correct. Yeah. And there are times, like, if something got scrapped, people can do that. I mean, we have the ability to borrow up to that amount, but if it was determined that some of that work either couldn't happen legally, or we decided against it, but more likely the first, 'cause I think, there's two things I have, if, if the state were to make it illegal, then we wouldn't be able to borrow, we wouldn't do it, 'cause we wouldn't be able to. wouldn't be able to. There is a difference between then saying, ah, we just don't feel like doing it, because arguably, people voted for it. And then they may say, well, I would have never voted for everything else had I, you know, so there, that's a different scenario.
Yeah.
But if, if in fact, that does come down from New York State, I believe, based upon, I think someone may have mentioned that here at our last meeting, although I wasn't, you know, wasn't sure if that was, you know, I have to do my own research on what exactly is the facts around that. Because I know, you all know that the current turf product is now being banned.
Right.
So I, again, I'm not saying they may be completely accurate, but I wasn't sure if those two things were getting mixed together possibly.
PFAS is being, PFAS is banned.
Being banned.
Right. This was on turf.
I'll send it to you guys. The bill that's proposed.
It's a committee bill.
It's a New York Senate bill. It's proposed. It's not anything that's actually.
I thought, I thought we were told that PFAS wasn't an option.
No, it isn't. It's not. It's not. I'm sorry, it is not.
This is a larger, larger proposition.
I had meant to check on this the, the last week, I didn't, but I just did some instant checking. And the likelihood of it coming out of committee is not great. I mean, you just think about the number of fields now with turf and the cost to replace, et cetera, et cetera. So it may, you know, anyway, I, I can give you more of an update, but, you know, worth paying attention to. But I think the likelihood of it being a factor for us is.
It might get past the, just that no, no new turf fields can be installed, right?
What he's saying is that it's really kind of in the, in the initial stages of being considered. It's just a senate committee, like, you know, it's not, it's not really actionable, certainly in like the timeframe we're talking about.
Yeah.
But are there, are there trustee questions for?
I, I think, you know, be, and Alex, you already mentioned this, sorry. This drives David nuts. The cafeteria and the initial drawing was beautiful and fancy and triggered many people in our community. So it would be super if we could see an updated rendering of the cafeteria.
So, yeah, so the cafeteria itself would likely look very similar. And I, I think that the architects and I can try to, so I think people, I mean, there's two things. I think when we do add an addition to the building, you know, it's an investment in the building. And of course, we wanted to, there, some of the design is purposeful, right? You want it to also be a nice looking addition, right? Because there's going to be a certain cost that putting an addition on the building is, you're going to be in for a certain dollar amount anyway. And then there may be certain decisions that I'm just, you know, they'd be better to break down kind of with what one design may cost versus another, or give you some kind of ballpark sense. As far as the, because I had asked this question earlier, we know it needed to be two stories, because you need to be able to access it from the high school lobby as well as the downstairs. So the height is purposeful, so that our high school students can easily get there from upstairs. And it allows those additional rooms to be kind of built upstairs for the high school students to, to provide, like study rooms and other things. So the design is purposeful from that perspective. But when I was mentioning something about, and that's of course why you need the height on the, why the height is, because it's, it's being attached to two floors of a building. But they said, you know, they did explore different ways to, to design the roof, like slanted or dirt. It's actually cheaper to build it the way they're building it, rather than to kind of lower, try to, they said they kind of make a graduate, graduated slope to it and all that rest. That is actually a much more complicated design. In some ways, like going up and building it the way they did, isn't more expensive. Arguably, like trying to change the heights to make it access, kind of lowering it as it went down, would have been a more costly build. So there are like things in which sometimes may appear more expensive.
I'd be able to talk to that.
But from a function standpoint, you needed to be able to get into the cafeteria from upstairs and downstairs.
But from, it's not, sorry.
So I mean, there's a, there's a reason that it had to be two stories. And in terms of materials, again, they can speak to that. But there, it isn't like double the, there may be a increase in certain aspects of, of the way it looks possibly. We typically even hear, like, there's different flooring, there's the flooring that we're on that I would imagine was, you know, more than, there were other options that may have been a little less expensive. There's some, some things where we, they make, make some decisions or recommendations that may be a little bit more money. But I, but I don't think that, I think outside of that, we want it to be nice. We, if they presented something that was a big block that looked like a penitentiary, we would all have a different, no, we would have a different reaction to it. So I think they would be better to kind of say, like, yes, we want it, we want our students similar to here to feel they're connected to their recess yard. There is some area within the courtyard that'll have some greenery and trees. And, and, you know, they, they, they do consider that, the light and the north-facing light, all the rest, sorry.
No, I was going to say, to both of your points. Maybe it's just about like highlighting certain things to the community, because I think like those windows that are going to be, receive this lovely light because of the glass base, like maybe somehow those could be like pointed out, because I think people don't normally think about that. But if we emphasize it, it'll be emphasized for them. And didn't we like knock off the roof garden and the?
Yeah, and I think honestly, they did that more for like, because a lot of times, I mean, it, it's funny, because I think sometimes like it's, they're trying to show like inspiration, because they do view.
Right.
Schools as you also want them to be like welcoming and, you know, take advantage of where they are. And similar, well, similarly here, I think this was purposeful, right, to kind of, there were different ways this could have been designed, but the idea that it's, there's a natural connection to the, the playground and, and students when they're transitioning. And, you know, this didn't necessarily have to be glass either.
Right, no, but I guess to the point of like just showing that we've listened, we don't have the community room, we don't have that wonderful potential science area on top. The, like, let, let it, in the visual representation, if some of that change could be in there, I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Right. But I will say that there is no, because right now, it's a conceptual design. They understand that it will need to be reduced in scope. And part of the idea was just to reduce the floor space, right? Because we know what we need for the actual cafeteria, and there also included community room. So discussion today was, would we, would we make other design, you know, modifications to get you into that budget and maybe still try to have some sort of meeting room in there? Like, and again, it's, they understand where the budget needs to be on that space. But I, I do think, I, I'm not, they're not going to come with a different rendering, that's all I want to say. They're not, because each rendering does require. But I think when you speak to them, and it's another opportunity, they, at different points, they've presented so much information to you, I think you can kind of drill down. And they could do a much better job than I'm doing currently to explain, you know, is it, why it's, it functions the way it does, and it's not necessarily, won't be less expensive if you made some slight modifications, you're still probably going to be spending, you know, X amount per square foot and all the rest. So, and because you're also connecting to an existing building, which has a lot of work required anyway of that, right, to connect your, like your HVAC and electrical and there, you know, there's aspects of, of a lot of plumbing and different things and the kitchen that you're building there that are not inexpensive, you know, so.
Can I ask you, if, looking at the bond, if we were to do split vote for the field work, what would be the values? We're talking about thirty-eight total, what would be the value of the core bond?
I think, like, if we look at.
The value of the core bond.
I think the core bond's like thirty-two million, let me just make sure.
What do you mean by core?
Meaning if we took the fields out.
So if we put the fields up on their own.
Merit.
Ballot, so to speak.
Right.
Yeah.
So the infrastructure at FMS?
And the building.
Yeah.
Basically that, I just want to get a sense.
Well, the building would be connected with like any other upgrades we're doing, like just.
Yeah, yeah.
Building conditions work. So I think the, once, if we separate out the fields, I just wanted to refresh my computer. I think it was about six million of field work.
Sounds right.
So it's about thirty-two million, which includes building additions as well as upgrades and all the rest, yeah, BCS work. And then the remainder is the fields. I just want to make sure I have the right number there. I just want to look at the revised budget again. Yeah, it might be a little bit more, Alex, because it's five point seven for hard construction costs alone.
Thirty-two, thirty-three.
Yeah, it's about, it's probably about six point five million, like when you add in some soft costs there. Six point four million.
Thank you.
Has there been any exploration at the town level of getting permits for a plastic turf?
We don't get our permits from the town.
On village property?
You don't have to get permits from the town.
We get it from New York State Education Department is our permitting agency.
Oh.
Which in some ways, that's why I take, because we're, us and every other school district in New York State has that same permitting.
And, and the school district owns Burke Estate?
Mm-hmm.
I see.
And Reynolds. And Reynolds Field, we own.
What about a wetland inspection? Is that, and this is a question for the architects, right?
Yes.
And the engineers. And so I'm just putting it out there as something.
Wet inspection, I'm sorry.
Wetlands.
It's the SECR, isn't it?
Yeah, that, that's going to be so.
Is that part of it?
Yes.
Okay.
They look at the entire area. They actually not only look at the area of impact, they look at the surrounding areas that are connected to it. So it, it does include, like, that's just the required review.
Okay.
It's, you know, even when we, the field at Reynolds Field, we had a look at coordinating agencies. Like, there's, you know, some coordination if, if it's adjoining to even like a county property. And I'm not saying in this case it is, but that is part of the work that they, they do to make their determination. So that is, and, and we've done it, to be honest with you, before, because we have built fields at Burke. And the footprint is still, I mean, it was a new process for this work, but we've done that previously when we did the work there, we were required to consider the entire Burke Estate.
But that was for a grass field.
No, it was. But I'm saying, like, and, and it had to be redone legally. Anytime you do anything, they've redone it. But I, I mean, I know that in the past, they consulted all the, you know, they still had a good under, at least they, they started with a better understanding, because they, we did have some history there, that's all. But they went, they looked at it with the new project, like what that would mean for the area.
I'm just thinking about the fields. I found it really compelling when Drew came and he handed out a piece of paper of his schedule. It was like handwritten and photocopied. It was really compelling, because all of a sudden, here's this visual of how much usage the, the fields get, and what a debacle it is to try and give teams an equitable amount of time on the fields. And I know some, some community members have reached out to me saying, oh, but how many kids really are benefiting from this, which is why I had said, you know, can we have that graph, a graphic? But as we move forward in our communication with the community, having something like that.
And maybe including that in your, in your deck, Alex.
Okay, yeah. I didn't really touch on it much, you know.
But I think that's a good point, because I don't think, if you, when you see it, it makes it so real, like the need.
And, and just how, how much is happening, how many moving parts there are, you know, how, how can we get girls to play as much as the boys on the better field, you know, all the thinking that goes into that. And I thought it was very cute, the handwritten photocopy. I wouldn't get rid of that.
Yeah, I might have it at home someplace.
But it was compelling.
Yeah, it was.
Alex, I think that the presentation that you created, a bunch of people stopped me, to say they really kind of changed their understanding of it.
I love it.
And understanding of this, like, the relationship of the budget and the bond too, because I don't think people are always clear that if this, some of the stuff we're addressing in the bond isn't addressed, that it may go into future budgets.
Yeah.
And I think that was a powerful message that, you know, we should keep sharing. Oh, wait, I have another thing to add.
The history, some of the history.
The history of the bond.
That sounds very helpful.
Not too boring?
No. I almost feel like we need more presentations, because it really changed their understanding.
Well, tomorrow, I'm going to do an abbreviated one for the, the high school PTSA, so. Not too abbreviated.
And I've reached out to the senior council, I sent you a email.
Yes, that's great, a great idea.
Set up a meeting.
That's excellent. Did they, is that going to move forward? You're going to be able to go and do that?
Well, they have a meeting in April. We'll have to, I'll speak to you, and we'll see if.
That's perfect.
That's a good time to do it.
What about the clergy in town? I had some, like, one or two reach out to me, ask me like my thoughts. I know. So I think it's like, really, if you think about all the different sectors that have, you know, influence and that people listen to, like, one of the members was like, I just want to understand it.
I mean, certainly, I'll, I'll meet with anybody, so, you know.
The nursery schools.
Oh.
Nursery schools are.
You can come to, you can come to Little Leaf, we can do a presentation there.
I'd love to, yeah.
Is that a conflict of interest?
No, I think so, your school in the community.
I'll.
No, no.
Because anybody that cares is long-term.
No, you're right, you're right.
We have to have that. And part of the last bond initiative.
That's a very good idea.
Was a very big part of it, is to outreach to the parents in the nursery schools, all the nursery schools, because they have a long-term interest in the well-being and longevity of our schools. So they need to be advised of it, because frankly, before you even come to the FMS complex, having a student, you have no idea.
You have no idea, that's true.
The status of the school is, whether or not you have a student in Hillside, this place is like, you know, a mystery. So I do think that it's important to reach out, obviously, to our innate parent population, the broader community, the village, but also to young parents who are maybe just getting, investing and putting down roots in their community.
Okay, so let's talk about that.
Yeah, I can share with the, some of you are on the communications work group that is meeting tomorrow. And I can share with, we, we have a communications plan that's been in existence for a little while, and we're now going to put energy behind it. I've got a, and by the way, today in meeting with Cara, who, who's our associate, I've asked her for the rest of the year, she probably spent about ten hours a week on that superintendent report you see on my behalf. I've said, let's not do that for the rest of the year, and take that rough ten hours, and move it over into the bond and budget. And then I'll find a way to still make a reasonable update to you each, every other week. But I, we only have so much time. Also, I've been working with Melissa D. to put back on the schedule tomorrow, meeting with Cara and her boss, Brian, because we're trying to get it.
Thursday.
Thursday. Everything's tomorrow, so tomorrow's Thursday. But, but let me just read to you, and I'll send it to you. But as of March twenty-seventh, where are we in our plan? So the video has been, the filming's wrapped, and post-production's underway. We hope to have a deliverable on that. The newsletter, we're mapping out that as a bond newsletter, so a little old-fashioned.
That will go out to the whole community.
Yes, we'll go out to all communities. Third thing is what we're calling short testimonials, because several people, I'm going to name names, wrote scripts for their video, which I then looked at, and it's phenomenal. So Maureen, Alex, Siri and Bobby's script is just wonderful. They were all filmed, but the whole script doesn't make it in, right?
I don't think any of mine did.
Melissa Shandroff, Brittany Stample, Joe Vaccaro, hit the ball out of the park.
Great.
So, so those are all testimonials that I said to Cara, let's grab those and use those in other ways. And so then fourth is a social media push, using this material, get the website updated more. Six, have the fact sheets and FAQs more in process, community meetings. PTSA SEPTA, we've done one, we have two more. We're going to say to them, please reach out to community to come to those, to booster groups. We're looking at May-June, senior citizens, late April, May-June. I'm going to add in here nursery schools. And then coffee and house gatherings, which we are thinking maybe BOE members might be able to think about how to.
We like coffee.
Identify, people might host those. So I've used the phrase, maybe nobody knows what I mean.
It's going to be a very busy.
Yeah, flooding the zone right now with all kinds of communication.
Because there's not much time.
So, Bill, that's till June.
And, and we're going up against quite a well-organized, which I respect, quite an organized set of individuals calling question as to whether this is the wisest thing to do.
Will you put some of those clips that you thought were really good into the newsletter that's going to go out?
Yes, yeah.
Because I think that's going to be the thing that reaches.
Yeah, so the idea on the newsletter.
The most number of people, for sure.
Cara and I talked about this today, we have to sort through the number of pages. But you've got your three main features. I think we should talk a little more about the fields tonight. But you've got your three main features, i.e. Farragut, the fields, and what did you call in your presentation? You gave it a good name, mechanical engineering.
Oh, MEP, mechanical engineering and plumbing.
Okay, pipe plumbing.
Pipe plumbing.
But then we have, we have good material for each of those three. And then I said to Cara, go to the board president's presentation, because then you'll also have an article or section on the history of commitment to this, the bonds here, then the comparative commitment. So that's all right there, just packaging that. So now it's just getting energy behind this plan.
I was talking to Cara, we were, only half joking, that we were going to make social media memes, showing all the things of the building, that were older than the buildings, you know, like the, I mean, it's fun.
Wait, that's hilarious.
Yeah. And, and when I did the presentation in the fall, and it's true, it's one of those weird things, but the Farragut building, when it flooded in nineteen oh-two, is closer in time to. but the Farragut building, when it flooded in 1902, is closer in time to Darwin's first voyage on the HMS Beagle than it is to us in the present day. Stuff like that we're gonna do.
So somebody asked me yesterday, some prior, prior board members, if the, Alex, if your slide deck, which they thought was great, would be, is it put up somewhere where people could get access?
Yeah, it's on the bond, it's on the bond page.
Okay, that's what I said.
Oh, great.
I thought. And Maureen, I have a question, two questions really. At what point, or Bill, this is for both of you, would it be good for us to be making a decision about how the bond is gonna be? If it's gonna be one part, two parts, five parts?
Yeah, next week, April 8th, next week.
Next week?
Yeah, because it, you have to vote on it on April 22nd. And at that point, when you, it, it's similar to like the budget, we, it's that kind of very like legalistic, you know? This is, what will be on the agenda is exactly how it'll appear on the ballot in terms of, you know, language, how it's, how it's.
What's the latest time that you could vote on it for it to be on the ballot, for the bond?
But you need to decide next week so that on April 22nd you adopt it to make the June 17th.
Okay.
Date. So between today and then next time, I think, I think right now we have the scope unless it changes. So we have $38 million that we've been looking at since, I guess, February. That was like the new kind of budget. And, and the fields with the soft costs are probably more like 7.3 million of that because it's the escalation contingency and all the rest that's like below the line item. So we would put that, like, so we would have to break up the dollar mounds, like, to your question. Because what it, what it would have is, you know, this scope of work, I'm making it up, the addition, the MEP and all the rest is going to be 32-point-something million. That's a question, right? You have to say what it includes and then the dollars. And then the other question would be, you know, the fields improvements at Burke and with this dollar amount, right? Within it. So you do then have to go in and like dice up the, the cost below the line, below the construction. And that, again, if that's how you, or, you know, you can break it up however you choose to, but that, I think, I know the board has been talking about, you know, having a.
Should we talk about it right now?
Yeah, I just have one very easy question. Will the budget and the bond votes be able to take place in the Cochran Gym?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes, right?
But not on the same day, right?
No, one in May, one in June.
Yeah, one in.
But I'm saying we'll have, that's okay to use the Cochran.
Yes.
Okay.
To your point, is there anybody here who does not want to split up the vote? Because in my sense, I think we're all in favor of it.
Sylvia?
Good, okay.
I, I have a question about the splitting. Like, you said that if A doesn't pass, then B won't pass.
Correct.
So then what's the point of?
I mean, you can't pass B by itself.
You can pass A and not pass B?
Yes.
Right?
But if.
Because, because like if you let them, because.
It can happen without A.
Yeah.
So we couldn't, if, if A was the building and B was the field, we wouldn't do, right?
You have to do, you have to.
If B fails, B automatically fails.
Correct.
Regardless if B's numbers were passable.
Yes.
Correct.
So that's the risk that you take.
Yes.
Do we have to make it like that?
No, it would just be one bond then.
Well.
No, it'd be, it'd be two votes.
Yeah.
But I think that if you're gonna split out the, um, the fields, you know, and, and not, like, God forbid, which has like mechanical upgrades and all that, were to fail. And I, I think we look at the addition as needed legal instructional space, like, to meet legal standards. I think it would be sending, like, potentially, like, the wrong message in terms of the importance of it, you know? I think that typically the, the things in which are the larger priority, I guess, I don't know if that's the right words, that you would make the other things that we would really want and like to see and believe we need, maybe, you know? If we're gonna split it, then you would definitely need A.
If you say A, B, it's confusing, that B can only pass if A passes, right? And if A potentially fails.
Then B fails.
But B had the numbers, you'd see the numbers anyway, right?
Yes.
And say B did pass, but we can't pass it because A, how much of reimbursement would we be losing on B if that happened?
Well, we likely would have to come out with a diff, we would have to.
Do it.
Think about, and that's where, you know, as much as unfortunately because of the flood, we had to push off our bond vote a little bit, like, so if every, if things were to go down, right, you know, then we wouldn't be able to do another bond vote for the following year. So we would have to decide, do we bring everything back or do we just restructure everything at that point? Because there may be people.
Ultimately, my question is, the field is reimbursable up to X amount percent.
Well, well, it, well, they, oh, the other piece is, actually, I forgot this piece, which is, you can't have field work reimbursable unless it's connected to building work.
But there's building work associated with the field work.
No, building, like, the physical building.
Not the maintenance buildings on the field.
And the maintenance buildings are no longer in the bond scope. We removed it. But even they would not be, it has to be, to get any $1 back, it has to be connected to the Farragut complex building renovation in order for it to be reimbursed. So that's a, that's a state requirement. You get no reimbursements on fields unless it's connected to a larger building permit.
Is that why Irvington is like, what, capital reserves?
Oh, you're right.
Well, yeah.
We do its turf.
Yeah, well, they, yeah, they're, well, they're doing it to put lights on their turf fields. They have a, a good amount of money in their capital reserve and they're working on doing another bond like next year. So I think they're doing about $5 million worth of work out, or 4-point-something out of their capital reserve just to do some odds and ends.
So what's our current connection then, Maureen, in terms of you just laid out?
Yeah, so, so we couldn't, you couldn't allow B to pass without A.
Right.
It wouldn't be legally allowed.
So the question is if they are, while separate votes packaged with the same bond, then they are deemed connected and are up for that reimbursement.
When we file it to the state, it's on the same building permit.
Ah, there you go.
You put them on the same permit, but a vote is different from the permit, right? Because if, like, this, this building has its own permit number, it has its own building number in the Farragut, which includes the Burke Estate has its own location number that's connected, yeah.
And then, but that has to be a combined, same day, bond vote even though the vote's separate.
Yes. They have to be done together. And if the fields fail, then we just don't do the fields.
Can you, can you suggest language?
Well, we can get the, well, I can get the lawyer to draft it so that you can review it next week. I would say to them, if, if I'm correct, you'd be splitting it just that way, the fields being separate and everything else being in one. Because, I mean, arguably you could, which, not saying you would do that, you could have, you know, other things separated rated too, but I don't think we're doing that. Yeah, so I'll have the attorneys, I'll, I'll share with them the budget and the scope of work and ask them to draft, you know, resolutions so you can start looking at them next week. And then on the 22nd you would then finalize them. If, if you're directing us saying, make it a split vote, A and B, right?
Yeah, I think we are saying that.
Next week, we're finalizing.
You're gonna, you're gonna finalize it next week and vote on it on April 22nd. Next week you'll be able to review all the secret documentation, ask questions, feel comfortable so that on April 22nd you'll feel like this is just now us voting on it, like, we have all our answers, all our questions answered and you know what you're voting on.
Could we see all of that in advance? You give it to us in advance of the 8th?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I, yes, no, I'm sending it. I sent it already today, later. I mean, you prob, you probably have it in your mailbox right now.
All right. On the bond, any other things you wanna see on the page?
Bill, do you feel like it should be a two-part?
Did you wanna talk about the field?
Yes, can we talk about the field?
Yeah.
Bill, do you think this bond should be a two-part?
Backfill?
This relates, Jody, I, I think, I mean, I, I don't want, I, I just want us to speak a little bit in a work session format about where, where we are in the field, our sense of the field. The need and demand is clear. I'm, I'm confident that we can, once we get rolling on communications, make the need very, very obvious to people. That still may not be enough to get over the hurdle of, you know, very well-organized set of individuals within Hastings, and I'm saying this respectfully, who are opposed. I read more information today on, on how effective they've been in even turning some, the minds of some athlete, parents of athletes to question whether this is the, the type of thing to be doing in Hastings. So I think we still pursue, we still move down this path. And I'm ready to be, you know, on behalf of our student, athletes and students and residents who want access to the field. That's a giant thing getting lost here because we, you know, the concerns and questions we had months ago about give us access to your natural turf field within our existing financial structure anticipated, well, we will be highly limiting because wear and tear on the field, we, we, we can't keep up with that. So there, there are all these reasons to still go down the artificial turf path. But given that, that, you know, the resistance and concerns and questions are there, it may lead to a smart structure to split the vote. So we for sure protect, we're still gonna have to be very, very clear on things like, actually, your best buy is a glass cafeteria. Your best buy in terms of value and understanding and quality experience for your students is, is what a space well-designed like this one gives you. But we gotta not let those other concerns drag down a really fundamental need. So that leads me to this. I mean, I, I've been doing a little more thinking, a little more outreach. Maureen's joined me in that. Alex, as your board president has, you know, we've been circling back to talk to different options in our just exploratory. You still would be going down the path with a couple of these of, of unproven products for Hastings. And there may be some interest from some entities to say, let, let's use Hastings as the place we go. This is all very preliminary to, to sort of get, if you will, get our turf on the ground so that we can actually prove that it can work in a public school environment setting. But it's, it still would be for Hastings, you would be voting on an unproven product within a public sector. Now, let me explain why I care about that. If, if I'm back in my independent school world with private money, that's a very different set of decisions, very different. And trying to compare governance issues from the independent school world to here, it's just not a fair comparison. And, and, and then if you're in the higher ed sector, a whole set of different decisions, even if you're on the public side of that. Funding streams are very, very different and, and all the rest. So it, it matters what, you know, we are as a public entity and not wanting to be the test case in that regard. So here's the question, I don't know what the board should talk through, and, you know, how willing are you to think about ways to have some flexibility in what may be that field option, given all the concerns relative, now I'm going full circle, that our students need it, they've told us they need it, so.
Yeah, to add a little bit, so the energy and the, we're still having discussions with writers of alternative materials. And those might be fruitful. So, but, but I think what Bill's trying to outline is that the challenge then shifts on the other side of things. You know, on the turf option, there's sort of no risk. It's a known entity, it's a known-known. There's a lot of interest in the board and the community to look at alternatives. The only thing is, sort of invariably, those alternatives come with a riskier profile because they're not proven. So it's just something that we have to grapple with. Those might be options for us to say, you know what? We'll accept the risk, we'll accept perhaps the higher cost, but we think it's, it's worth trying, trying to go there. But that's something we're gonna have to look into. David, you have your.
I would also like to know what the community availability would be with this alternative turf talent or something like that. Because what you spoke of to me is very important, that the community has access to this space. I would like to know what that access would look like in terms of a timeframe, like, opens at this time, closes at this time. So the community knows when, they know when, kind of like a bowling alley, you know you don't go on league night and kind of like something like that.
I like that.
So when can, when can the community use this field for personal use, right? But if we have this new unvetted field that obviously will, will need some rest time as well. They're saying not as much rest time as grass, but.
Well, there, there are additional things.
Like what?
The, the, the details are unclear at the moment.
Right, so I would like, what I would like is a comparison in community use of, of a turf talent field then. Because I want the community to have access to the field outside. There's a lot of taxpayers here that the, the dispatch said that do not have kids in the district. And those adults would like access to a open space. So would they have access to that open space if turf talent's drainage system needs to be working and running? And, and, sorry, can't walk on the field between these hours because, we don't know that, right?
No, it's true.
Or do we? I don't think we do.
No, it's true. It's a good question. And it's, it's, you know, and to that point, you know, our village doesn't really have municipal facilities that we kind of double as that, as a school district, is a very fair, very fair point.
But I think when we talk about community access, we're not talking about people like being able to picnic.
No, dog walk.
We're talking about scheduled, scheduled.
Or impromptu.
AYSO.
Yeah, like, community organizations that have sports teams as well, that would be scheduled.
That would be scheduled, but I think that if there's no scheduled.
We, we allow community use, like, casual community use.
Right, exactly. You've spoken about this.
If nobody's on the field, I can go there by myself. People use our track for recreational purposes, all of the facilities that we have, the public has access to.
And people bring their children up there and just play, pick up games.
And we've had like football games on Thanksgiving played up there and, like, kind of, like, not, not permitted,
but we've, the reason we don't have fences is the idea that they're open when they're not in use to community use.
And the problem with the grass is that, we're not, we're not allowing proper rest time.
No, no, we're not.
No one's chasing and went off, but they're doing a service to the community.
We'd have to consider like fencing and things like, of that to kind of really.
We have had to be, just for the use of the fields by our students, we have had to be strict at times. If it's an unplanned use by a team or an organized other, we have had to ask people to leave if it hadn't been planned and approved. So it's a great question. I mean, part of the challenge is that you, you have, basically, next week you need to really frame what is you're gonna do. And I'm not sure how we deal with the need to have the board come to a decision when it's such an unknown as to what this other option is.
Well, we talked about if there was an op, I mean, I think, again, I.
I don't know how you structure it, Maureen, you have an idea.
Can I have an idea? And maybe it's a dumb idea, I don't know. But because the bond is an authorization, let's say we're not decided on the exact product, material.
No, that, you can't do that.
But we, it has to be specified?
Use the money.
It's not even that, it's, it's a legal thing because some people would not vote for it if it's not turf. You don't know, it was like here, it's like there's certain aspects of the work. When there's things, you're like, well, we might change all the unit ventilators, but then you end up changing half.
Let me see this, again.
No, I'm saying, I know just legally you cannot say, we're gonna upgrade the fields with either a turf talent or a natural turf field. You can't pose the question that way legally.
Is it, what, could you do this, just again, maybe it's a dumb idea, as dumb as the last one. If you, if you said, if you, if you said that we know we're gonna do this, this is the actual work we're gonna do to prep the fields, okay? And that's what's gonna go in the bond. And if it turns out that the proprietary portion of what we would put in is a, is a small enough number that we could go and go out of reserves, have reserves to vote that in on top of it.
Well, the capital reserve, any money that's gonna be left in capital reserve after the mandatory, which arguably probably anymore this year, is for that boiler at Hillside. That money is all at your mark for the boiler.
The other thing on top of that is saying, would it make any sense to put the boiler back in and then have the reserve there for something like, I mean, again, it's a very messy concept. But basically, the bond covers all the field prep and then we would vote the product in out of reserves while keeping the boiler as, in as part of the bond.
I feel, I mean, I, I would suggest if you don't know what you wanna do, not even to put it up to vote. I mean, that would be my recommendation and just remove any.
But then when, when you do that?
I'm not saying I would do that, but if you're, I think a week off you can't, like, I think, we don't even, you know, I'm not, the architects and engineers aren't even up to speed on what we're talking about, right? And they are the, the ones that have to engineer it and design it, and they had some preliminary conversations. We met, like, with the person, but we didn't reengage them to.
Yeah.
Put this into a concept for us, which we don't really even understand fully what it would require from an engineering and a cost perspective. So I just think, I just think it would not.
Right, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
So let's say we did punt on it, but we wanted to get reimbursement on it. Could you, could you do something, let's say you paired it with the boiler. Instead of doing the boiler out of reserves, you did the boiler and the field as a, as a separate bond.
Or you did another building project at Farragut.
Okay, we have to be Farragut.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, because you said a different address. I mean, just to know, maybe it's useful for us to know how we.
I mean, I don't, I think we all, all agree, there's, there's a value to looking at it. We've even, but I think we also said, would it be in addition to turf, not a replacement for it? We had said, like, we still, there was still some que, question about, do we, because of the field resting that David mentioned, like, would we still want to have one turf field in the mix in that scenario? in the mix in that scenario? I mean, like, is that, we kind of talked about it from that perspective, right?
I think we kind of need to take a step back, 'cause some of these meetings were like, I don't wanna say sidebars, but like, hearing, hearing the company out on what they can do, and not necessarily brought into this forum, right? This is the first that this forum is talking about.
Right, it's very exploratory, and there's nothing specific, clear, available.
And I don't even have the architects, engineers up to speed.
So it's not proven, it has not been tested here in the United States. It's proprietary, right, which, which to me, kinda goes to the rules that govern how procurement works, and probably wouldn't be reimbursable.
Right, that's what our architects, that was their first, that's what they advised the board on.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think there's been some appropriate discussions to better understand, I mean, there've been discussions before and in the December 17th board meeting, and the public record is a very, there's a slide, they're very clear, three, four points on why it, with all full due respect to a creative, maybe future potential option somewhere within the public school world, that it wasn't gonna work for us. But given all the questions, and then, call us, call us smart for listening, and those opponents need to remember, we are listeners. That doesn't mean you listen, they're not gonna necessarily agree with the answer, but we listened. So we did a little more exploring, and I think we owe it, exactly for your question, Maureen, to now publicly, in a work session, talk about it. I think the dilemma, and then, is, it's still not clear and definite enough that you, we get over a couple key, passed a couple key checkpoints. Has it been used somewhere else in the public school world, anywhere, and, you know, so we can see it, you know, if there, and what is that then, risk of loss of the reimbursement? That's very significant.
Very significant.
And then, that then says, it may be smarter to say, let's really push along on the artificial turf approach, do our best to make that case, and those even on the board who, you know, to at least vote to allow this to be a question before the village, and then we see where we are and separate the two. So we clearly try and at least get, dare I say athletically, over the goal line on the major Farragut and the pipes, you know what I'm saying? And then, really push on the artificial, and if that doesn't happen, respect that, and then circle back to what might be an option, and then, as Maureen said, there may be some other facility needs, we know we have them. The other reason I don't want us to be iffy is, we have a significant question, we're managing, but the public is asking, i.e. the Farragut wing. And how is that whole process getting managed and all the rest? So, I'm a little reluctant, I mean, that's a very understandable crisis we hit, we're working daily to manage it, but we have doubters out there, right? It's natural to doubt public leaders right now, right? And so, I think that putting another doubt out there as to what would that field look like, what it would be, can you prove it?
Yeah, and I think it's, at this point, because the architects and engineers are, like, they did some early on investigation of it, right? So when we first began, and again, they, similarly, went through a process of working with, with the athletic director and looking at field usage and saying, you know, what are the options, right? So, when we had said this was presented to us and we wanted to explore it, they didn't go as far as, they went to the point of where they felt as though the hours of usage, based upon their analysis of what was given to them by the district, by the athletic director, and trying to solve the issue of needing more time on the fields or more hours, they didn't, in their, looking into this, and their, you know, first, kind of, they didn't delve too deeply, but they did do some work, and our Bob from LA Group had spoken and looked into the product, and he said, well, I think, it is fascinating, I think it's really interesting, and I think there's a real value to it, but I don't know if it solves your fundamental problem. And they didn't fully design, right, so, you know, because you have to pay them to do these things, right? They didn't fully design it, because they've never worked with this system, and then they also were the ones, again, not me, who put up, because they work so much more closely with SED, and, you know, I do bidding too, but they're saying, like, I didn't know if there was a competitor out there, I wasn't sure if there was something that could be liking kind or different product that there could be, and to their understanding, there is not, and they had concerns about being able to, you know, be able to get this to pass muster at the state, but they also, at that point, said, based upon what their understanding of it and the hours that we're looking for, for our field usage, this helped us definitely much, much better than our current situation, but they weren't, they didn't think it kind of solved our, almost like with the addition, they were trying to solve the issues that we're bringing to them. So I would say that if you, you know, you can certainly talk a little bit, I don't think, I think there's a value to still further discuss it as a potential option for the future, because we still have a lot of issues, I'm saying with Burke, we're not touching Burke, we still have baseball fields, I mean, it's not to say there isn't a value to putting a better drainage system on the grass fields we have, I just didn't know if, if we were changing course, because I don't know it, like, again, because not everybody here has spoken about it.
Yeah, so I think that, sort of I said a few minutes ago, I'll try to be very, very efficient. So, artificial turf is a very known, proven product and approach for athletes to have optimal time to do their sport. And there's lots of public schools that are using it, and I understand lots of questions and about safety and all the rest. We also know that even since the 11 years that Hastings grappled with this question, millions upon millions of athletes have been on these, on this turf, and, and sort of the incidence of bad health isn't to the extent that those who fear. So it's a known entity, that product approach, excuse me, that allows us to address a problem. Having heard lots of good questions and a very creative, innovative community, we looked at and talked to turf talents a while ago, given the ongoing questions, it was quite smart for a few of us to circle back. Circling back, still cannot get over the questions that are there. It's not a negative comment on it as an option or product, it's just that, I as superintendent cannot recommend to the board a product, I cannot say, this isn't a public school environment somewhere being used to all the minutes needed to provide the quality that's required. And then, second, it's not probably gonna be fundable by state to that extra money we need, here my order there, first, you know, and then, that leads me to say, right now, cannot recommend it, and again, do with great respect for those trying to create an alternative. And if later we are up again and we see that we can point to examples, it may be a good use of the public.
Yeah, I mean, one of the.
So I mean, it was correct to explore, but my recommendation right now is we say, we're focused on either artificial turf or just the natural turf, but I'd recommend artificial turf, see where we are come the June referendum, and then we understand what the next step is.
Yeah, and I think the one thing we talked about, like, in terms of adding something to the referendum, was adding that, I was just, when we were thinking about, because again, there, it is like an excellent product, right? It's not to say what it can do to a natural grass field in terms of like rain and all the rest, like, that, that in itself is, you know, we would love to have that on the fields, if we didn't, like, you know, currently, it'd be wonderful, but I don't know if it would solve the whole problem, but I think we discussed, is there, is there some interest to consider adding an option to maybe do the, that type of system at Reynolds? I think we talked about, like, would, because we weren't quite sure that, still kind of potentially needing one, like, multi-purpose turf field, we felt, just from the hours perspective, I think we kept getting hung up on the hours that kind of Drew put together, and like, was this then going to solve that issue? Even though it would be much, much better, it may not close the gap completely. That's, I think, we, we're saying, wow, like, this could be really wonderful for the baseball or for Reynolds Field, or should we consider adding something, I mean, it's kind of late in the game, to the referendum, to put funding toward that, to see, like, to earmark money so that if it was possible, we could do it or something, but that would be actually increasing our costs, so I didn't know, you know, people on it.
And Bill, when you say, see where we are come June, do you mean where we are with regard to turf talents?
No, I'm suggesting that we've, the village residents need to know, we look thoroughly at options other than turf and natural. And so we'd done that about a half year ago, we then circled back just to understand, and the reasons that we didn't, weren't bringing it forward to you as a board before are still the same reasons. And said with full due respect, what I meant in June is if the turf, artificial turf loses, we don't have it, and we're not left with an option at that point as to what's gonna happen with our fields, we would keep looking, we still will not have another example in the country at that point.
Are you still in conversation with turf talents, or you?
Well, it was very preliminary, very exploratory, nothing, 'cause we, we don't have another example what to point to, and we can't get over, if the field's what, Maureen, about, how much is the field?
Seven million.
Seven million.
With soft cost, about seven point two.
Yeah, seven point five million, so you're looking at roughly three million.
But that, that's also for site work and parking and all the rest.
Yeah, yeah, but so I'm, I'm going to, so you're gonna give about three million back from the state on that.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
You know, and, and the turf talents field, we, unproven product, again, I'm saying respectfully, we don't know what that exact cost would be, might be, you know, somewhere in that, but we're not getting anything back. So I, I think it's just saying, what I'm saying is, I'm recommending we pursue, artificial turf is the option, knowing there's questions, and then if that vote goes down, then we reassess what is necessary for our fields, is what, is what I'm trying to say.
And if memory serves me correct, I believe that the turf talent advocates did come and say that this was a cheaper option, but now, without reimbursement, this is definitely not a cheaper option.
And do we also know what the upkeep of it is, too? I mean, I think there's so many levels to fieldwork, right? It's not just like the implementation is the upkeep.
Like Bill said, it was exploratory, I mean, we don't, you don't know the 10-year cost of this product, right? Maybe they gave you a pamphlet or something, but, you know, you can't go to a neighboring district, you can't go to someone in California.
It's speculative.
Exactly, we don't, you can go to someone in Europe, but the costs of water and everything is different there. So, how do you compare?
But what about?
Maybe they donate, maybe they give us a field so that we could be the first place in this country.
Are they interested in that?
To have a field so that other schools can get interested.
There's talks.
Yeah, there's some conversation.
And, and the grass option, I mean, I.
We have, we have the grass option, though, you know.
But what do you mean, we have the, we have one grass option, right? And what about, are, like, I'm still pro grass option for the new field. So, I know I'm not in the majority here on the board for that, but are we, are we moving forward next week to vote, we have to have the material, you're saying, right? The length with the material, we have to have it nailed down. So, are, are we next week only going to have plastic turf on the table?
That's the vote? The 22nd?
Yeah, so next week, you're gonna finalize the language that you'll vote on on the 22nd, yeah. So next week is more or less the day, the 20 seconds is just like, ah, you know, so moved type of thing.
Right, next, next week, next week is the day where we finalize the language that would go on the.
On the ballot, yeah, the scope of work.
So we are deciding basically right now.
Well, we can think about it during the week.
We can, but we're not allowed to talk, right?
We can think.
We can think. So, I, I mean, I, I would like to see a grass field, I would also still like to see lights, but because of, I'm thinking of hours of usage, I'm thinking of this, our kids not having anywhere to go and it's dark, and I'm thinking of modern lights that wouldn't have, you know, fluorescent lights in the houses on Burnside. That's my two cents, it's 9:03.
Well, I wanna respond to your two cents.
Okay.
I would also prefer to have a grass field, but I'm also thinking about that sheet that you referenced, that Drew presented to us, and everything that Bill and Maureen are explaining, and I think I've, and I, I actually would like lights also, but not so that kids could have a place to go, I don't think that would fly very well.
No, I don't mean to hang out, I mean, for organized sports.
But I, but I do, I feel, I share your feelings, but I also feel like it's something that, for me, I'm comfortable with a bond that would include a synthetic turf field for people in the village, then it becomes the choice of people in the village, that we're, that it would be putting up what the recommendation is that would best meet the needs at this point, unfortunately. I mean, I would much rather have a turf talents option. But that way, people can decide, if people are opposed to turf, then they vote no for that. I, I think it always goes through my mind, something that Bill said, I think when I raised it with you a while ago, was it's a democratic process, and we put it up for a vote, and we see what, and people can vote, you know? So, in that way, I'm comfortable putting it up for a vote.
And just, just to your question on the, the natural grass, I mean, that's what we have, and that maintenance and upkeep is, is naturally in the budget, right? So, so it didn't need its own, it doesn't have to be an offset to turf, do you know what I mean, because it exists already.
Right, right, but we don't have an accurate analysis of its, like, wear and tear, because it's the only field, right? We're gonna be adding another field, so there could be more rest time, right?
No, no, there's no new field.
We're not adding any new field.
Converting a field.
It'd just be, we're just, we're changing over the surface.
I thought there was three fields in the bond.
We're renovating the field.
No, we're renovating, the existing number of fields would be the same.
Yeah.
There, there are currently, like, four field, well, there's currently like four playing fields at Burke, one, two, full-size fields, practice fields, and then the baseball.
Right.
So we're looking to convert the practice field to the softball field, and then convert the upper soccer, lacrosse combo field to a turf field.
Okay.
So then, there would still be a lower grass field that would remain, and then the baseball field would remain as grass.
And the lower field is closer to the wetland, that would.
It is, yeah, the lower one is closer to the wetlands, yeah.
And just one thing that I think we talked about, refresh my memory, we took the lights out, did we say there would be a way to kind of make the potential to hook up, like, do the infrastructure if it passes, so that in the future, lights could, like, under some other mechanism be provided?
Well, like, well, okay, so when they did this, the SECA, they, at the time when they began that process, lights were still in the mix, and we, we had them do the analysis to include lights, because, this has gone to your, towards your question, so that if the board, between the time you adopted the resolution, wanted to either include lights as a separate option, or potentially, say, add the infrastructure, you know, put in an allowance for what, you know, for trenching for the electric, I do, it would increase the qual, I don't, that number is not, the dollars are not in there, although, it is much cheaper to put in the, at least trenching pipes that then electric could be run through later, because that's what we're really looking for, to put in pipes that later electric can be added. I don't think it'd be significant, I can ask that, you know, prior to next week, we can get the answer for that, because it may be, if we're not putting the service and just simply putting in the, the conduits that you could run later, like, run the wire through, it may not be expensive, and that may be something you could have put into the bid, and it may not be significant.
That's definitely a question for you.
But also, to Teresa and, Teresa and Jody's point about the lights, I mean, that is something, we have the, we know the cost, we removed it, I'm just saying, like, for your vote next week, if you wanted another question like A, B, and C, and then say, if A and B pass, C would be lights, and again, let that, I'm just, I'm not putting something controversial back on the table, I'm just saying that, it's, we took it out, but you could, you know, it's still within the timeframe that if you felt you wanted to consider it, because you know the dollars, we have the budget, we know what the cost is, and, you know, I, I think we took it out for two reasons, for budgetary reasons, and for, to, you know, to address some of the concerns around the neighborhood there, so.
Could you do A and C? Like, what if someone wants lights but without the turf?
No, you'd have to do B and C.
Okay, so you have to write it up that way.
I mean, it is, I.
And again, districts do, yeah, those kind of things.
It gets complicated, I mean, you could be, because it's, the upside of the options we have is, everything's been analyzed, proposed with good solid numbers, so the lighting is a good solid number, the turf is a good solid number. If you as a board say, we'd rather just do natural turf and keep that up, we don't quite, you'd wanna cost that out in some ways we haven't, I mean, there is drainage improvements built in here and all the rest, but, but right now, you have some known, recommended, projected costs, so you could, on the lights, do that third, you know, you could put that on there, because I actually think there may be about as much support out there for them as against them. There's a lot of good, you know, ways to benefit young people and the residents by adding two or three hours' worth of usage to that field. Now, you know, some communities near us are going through some back and forth on lighting, and I've been in touch with those superintendents, but the upside is, if the, these are, it's a quality system. and I've been in touch with those superintendents, but the upside is, if the, these are, it's a quality system, it's not splash light everywhere, it was analyzed. So that would be something for you to think about between now and next week.
And the architects will be here even to, like, if you had a specific question around.
Bond structuring, it's an easy, a relatively easy act, given everything's figured out, you know, you.
All right, so, it's a lot to think about, but if we're solid on what we need for the eighth, then we'll just wait for that day to arrive.
Can I just add one thing? Kind of in the communications plan, district-led tours of the buildings, I think that will be really great, like, if we could pick dates, because there's nothing like seeing decrepit buildings to, like, bring home the need, you know? So I think that would be great if we could put some dates out there.
No, Marine, it's a great idea, when I was going to the G O B, I stopped into the library and took some snapshots of the construction, I think I sent it to you, and I meant to say, like, we should put this into the presentation.
No, I will.
And some of the, you know, because that's just, it's very clear.
You see it.
And it's upsetting, you're like, ah, with the teachers teaching that space, the kids in that space, it's.
Good point.
It'd be shocking for a lot of the alumni that still live in the district as well.
Yeah, I think it would be shocking, and it's like the whole one.
Went to school to see what it's like right now. They'll know the way around, yeah, for sure.
You could start with those images, with music.
Dramatic music.
So Alex, maybe people could be in touch with you.
Of course, yeah.
If we have specific thoughts or questions, or things to sort through.
Okay, so, pretty well lined up for the eighth.
The only, the only one thing is, I think, in terms of the space, it's, it's difficult to see when the kids aren't there, you know?
Right, nobody's going to get the sense of how crowded it is.
Because honestly, when I see it, when it's like clean in summer, it doesn't look as.
It's true, when everyone's in class, it's like one way, and then when the bell rings, it's like, you know, prison break, you know?
But I think there are definitely aspects of the condition of the spaces, and like, some, which would then be addressed in the bond, too. Yeah, that's true. There is a.
If everyone's okay, we're going to move, just stay, trying to stay on time, we're going to move on to the proposed give-back days for the inclement weather days, so.
Oh, I thought we were done.
Well, we talked about it in there, but, so we have three days, right?
Yeah, third post agenda item, there's a memo to you, and it's now in the public record, what's being recommended. You will vote on this on April eighth, as with other calendar items, we bring it to you, give you some chance to talk about it here, and then, and then vote, well, now, a week later. It also puts into the public record for families and all the rest. Staff had a heads-up today, as always, my MO is to give staff first notice on things. And that similar email, which I also did share with you as an FYI, I would be sending to families tomorrow, just as, what's being recommended here. So based on a lot of consideration, the preamble here, you know well, which is, you know, we have a side letter with the HTA regarding any of the unused six inclement weather days. The approach is, per the agreement that we give back, meaning get days off for any of those unused days, at this point, that would equate to three days coming back. We've actually used three in a different sort of way, but the staff is benefiting. On January sixth, all staff reported, but without students, that required that to be a comp day. And so we are applying, Hillside teachers were off, that, because, so we were able to use one of the inclement weather emergency days towards that, because they can be either inclement or emergency closures. Of the four, we have four left, if you think district-wide, we've actually had one weather day, so conceivably, we might have five left, but we used one towards January sixth, so we have four left. But then we gave a comp day for January seventh, because that was also a day where some were in and some were not. And it's just cleaner just to say, everybody gets a comp day. What we did to spread out usage of that was, they could be at any time until the end of next school year, date-specific. And so then February sixth was an honesty-to-goodness weather day, so that was a, you know, so that's three days. In this case, two of the three days, that, one of which conceivably could have been as a give-back, students were already out, no, so there's no lost instructional time with the approach this year. So it's an uncommon way to look at this. But staff are still receiving, per that agreement, the benefit they see. So the dates we set, we pushed them as late as possible, the recommended dates, because something could happen, and so we're going to hold on to those dates as long as possible. Thanks.
I remember when it snowed in May.
Yeah, so we now, right now, are recommending an extra-long Memorial Day weekend, similar to, I think, last year, the year before, and then shortening the school year by one day. It's supposed to end the twenty-seventh, we would end it on the twenty-sixth. That is a region scoring day, but we're able to just have those few staff who need to be in for scoring the regions do that. We had looked, as I'd said in the note here, yes, I did, we did look at the twenty-first of April, upcoming. It's kind of soon, and we have our, which Melissa can speak to if you want, our first full district-wide approach with computer-based testing, that's a complication of itself, we're optimistic it'll go well, knock on wood again, but we have a wrinkle, which is the FMS students, a lot of them will be taking that assessment up here. And that's so that we don't lose any day, school time because of that. So the twenty, those tests start a little later that week, but being out on the twenty-first after a whole week's break has a lot of us worried about just the logistics. So it leaves us piled up at the end, three only, if you will, and that's the recommendation. So you can ask questions and or.
It's going to bookend Memorial Day weekend and the ratings day?
Correct, and then if, we're not going to need to use them, but if it happens, we would peel it back from the earliest to the latest, meaning May twenty-third, twenty-seventh, and then the twenty-seventh again in June.
I'd just say, the plan sounds good to me, I like how you're thinking about the assessments, and then pushing them back towards Memorial Day.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Okay. All right.
Good.
And then, just so you're clear, I'll send a, you raise your hand.
He's hitting the gavel.
I used to have good vision, I'm glad it's still there. The, so we'll send a note to all families tomorrow, almost the same one here, just saying that it's, the vote is next week, but just so they can begin to understand what's coming.
Okay, good, good. All right, if there's nothing else, just look, if there's anything else, so, is there a motion to adjourn our meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, all right, thank you, thank you all.